All right, everybody. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Sarah, which allegiance?
Sir, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever being just as one.
Thank you. Public comment. You're more than welcome to come up to the dais, I'm sorry, to the podium. You have five minutes. Please state your name, your address.
I have a handout coming around, which I think will help us sort of briefly get through the comments here. My comments are regarding the performance of our new FHS facility. When we were selling and designing this building, one of the biggest features highlighted was to be the improved energy efficiency of a new facility versus the hodgepodge of HVAC systems we had in the previous 50- to 100-year-old building envelope. It seemed quite reasonable despite some of the more, you know, bombastic claims made during the project marketing period. Anyway, I put together a simple slide looking at our heating efficiency performance. The graph depicts our natural gas usage for first two bars are the last two years in the old FHS facility. The next two bars are the first two years in our new FHS. And then the final bar is where we should be with 15% efficiency improvement factoring in the added 10% square foot addition of the new facility. Now, for some reason, we're, it seemed to be headed in the wrong direction. This would show us off-target based on forecast by, you know, 10,000 CCF. So either I missed a memo and global warming became an ice age here, or perhaps we need some system sizing, tuning, or maybe there's a vendor performance problem. I don't know. But if we can't find a way to push natural gas usage under 90K, then I think we'd probably get a D in energy efficiency at the new facility. So since the building committee is under your care and feeding, I think before certainly dismissing the building committee, this issue needs to be rectified to see if we can start to get some return on our investment in the new high school. Does the council have any questions for me?
Not for public comment, Tim. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else inside that would like to make public comment? Please step up to the podium, state your name, and you have five minutes. Anybody online?
I do not see any hands raised. Oh, we have one.
All right.
We have Joanne Lawson.
Joanne, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Joanne Lawson, 9 Prattling Pond Road in Farmington, with just a random question. I was looking through all the committees that we have in town and so forth and noticed the ARPA. And I, my question, I guess, is, is there a listing of what money we got from the government and where we spent it?
Yes, there is. We'll have someone get back to you with all the information, Joanne.
Thank you so much. No rush.
You're very welcome. Anybody else online?
No other hands.
All right. We'll close out public comment, and we'll go on to item number D. Oh, letter D.
Agenda item D1, Jo, I think you're referring to?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to discuss the America 250th Celebration.
Second.
Motion second. Kathy?
I have Jessie here. You all know she's our new Director of Recreation, and she's going to give us a presentation. Rose Ponte, our Economic Development Director's here, too. And I may charm in and charm in as we go along.
You're going to charm in?
Charm in, yes.
Do you have that in your deal?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm here to share an exciting proposal to mark a historic milestone in our nation's The purpose of tonight's presentation is our plan to walk you through a proposed event, explain some of the basic logistics, highlight the community benefits, and show how this aligns with Connecticut's America 250th framework. The 250th anniversary of our nation's founding is truly a once-in-a-generation milestone. It gives us a chance to reflect on our rich local history, celebrate our shared values, and come together as a community to honor our past and look to our future. Here in Connecticut, Governor Lamont established America's 250th Connecticut Commission to guide celebrations with the goal to create inclusive and statewide commemorations which have an emphasis on grassroots and community efforts. The commission has set themes to help guide these celebrations, which include inclusive stories, the power of place, doing history, and working for the common good. Unfortunately, at this time, there's no state funding available to support these efforts. However, many local organizations and nonprofits and municipalities have entered into the planning stages for organizing these events. These events will capitalize on some of the themes outlined in the Connecticut guidelines and help communities celebrate America's 250th in a meaningful way. Our recommendation is to host a large-scale community celebration. It's my understanding that it's been several years since Farmington had a large-scale community gathering, and this would be a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the culmination of all of the local events and engage the entire community. We envision the celebration including four major components, each designed to engage the community, celebrate our history, and provide a memorable experience for all who The first component is the historical and cultural opportunities. We imagine giving local historical societies, museums, and cultural groups an opportunity to have a table or participate in the festivities. These groups will play a vital role in bringing our community's story to life during the celebration. By sharing exhibits, hosting programs, and showcasing traditions, these organizations will help us connect with the people, places, and events that shaped our community's history. Their participation ensures that our commemoration is not only a celebration of the nation, but a meaningful reflection on our own unique local heritage. For entertainment, we'd like to see history come alive through music. We'd like to celebrate our 250th to highlight the sounds that have shaped both our nation and our community. Local musicians and ensembles will perform pieces that reflect different eras from American history alongside original works that will showcase our community's talent. These performances not only honor the past, but also celebrate the rich musical traditions carried on by local artists today. We anticipate having a variety of food trucks available throughout the celebration, offering something special for everyone to enjoy. From fair festival classics to local favorites, these vendors will provide a fun and delicious way for families and friends to gather, take a break, share a meal while enjoying the evening's entertainment. As we bring this incredible celebration to a close, the event will culminate with a spectacular fireworks display. The show will last between 18 and 26 minutes and will be professionally licensed and conducted from a secure location. We plan on working closely with both police and fire departments to ensure all safety measures are in place, and so attendees can simply relax and enjoy the show. The finale will provide a memorable, exciting end to an evening filled with history, community, and celebration. We would like to highlight some of the key logistical concerns with hosting an event of this scale. We anticipate attendance to be between 3,000 and 5,000 people, requiring careful planning for site layout, traffic flow, parking, sufficient amenities like restrooms, and accessible features to ensure a safe and enjoyable experience for all those who choose to attend. While Farmington has multiple town-owned sites, each present challenges for an event of this size. Limitations include inadequate space, safety concerns for traffic patterns, parking constraints, impacts on residential areas, and the potential damage to athletic fields and other amenities. Our recommended solution is to partner with the town of Avon to host the event at 99 Thompson Road, which is just over the Farmington Town Line, as you can see on the map, and has a large space. After successfully coordinating with Avon for the Farmington Relay for Life event in the spring, we felt that this partnership with the town of Avon would benefit both communities by sharing costs and resources. This location provides the space, the layout, the parking, and the necessary amenities to host thousands of attendees. Its proximity to schools and the open fields allow for flexibility in the event design while minimizing the disruption to the neighboring areas. The site has also accommodated events of this size in the past, including fireworks In the following slides, we're going to go through some additional proposed event details to create a better vision of what this event may look like. We are proposing to hold the event on Friday, June 26, with a rain date of Saturday, June 27. This timing is just one week before the Fourth of July, giving us an opportunity to provide a top-quality fireworks display while also being cost-efficient with staffing and overtime. Setting the date well in advance also allows for the flexibility and for the community to plan ahead for this milestone celebration. We are proposing the event run from 4:00 to 9:30, creating a true community gathering with activities for all ages leading into the evening's fireworks. This timeframe allows families to enjoy the celebration after school and work hours while still concluding at a reasonable time for all who attend. It also gives us the opportunity to build excitement throughout the evening and end with a memorable finale. We anticipate between the two communities having about 5,000 to 7,000 people, drawing residents from Farmington and Avon as well as neighboring communities. In planning, we must consider the crowd flow, the safety, and the accessibility to amenities. The next few slides contain a high-level overview of the estimated budget, including the cost for the entertainment, logistics, and security. We anticipate the fireworks display to cost between $20,000 to $30,000 for an 18- to 26-minute show. This includes the required permits, insurance, safety fencing, all of kind of the necessary elements to host an event like this. The live brand, we're estimating between 5,000 and 10,000, which would include the sound equipment, the potential power supplies, the staging, the lighting, kind of all the necessary things to really, truly put on a one-of-a-kind show. And for logistics and security, we're planning between $8,000 and $10,000, contributing to the overall safety, ensuring that port-alettes are available, hand-washing stations, all of the things to make it a very comfortable event for everyone who attends. So this brings our total estimated budget for an event of this size to between $33,000 and $50,000, covering all aspects of the entertainment, logistics, marketing, and it would be shared equally between the Avon and Farmington communities, reducing the So at this time, we welcome questions, input, and feedback from the council. Your support is critical to making sure an event like this is a success, and we move forward to collaborate between the two towns, local organizations, and residents to ensure the 250th Celebration is meaningful, memorable, and a milestone for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. Anybody have questions?
I can't, I gotta, go ahead, Kim. All right. Just, I love the presentation. I'm looking forward to this. I'll be there.
Great.
I'm curious to know, we have such a history here in Farmington and the Farmington Valley. Are we going to be at least coordinating with all the historic components of Farmington to do things up to lead into develop some excitement for this?
Absolutely.
Little stadium and all that stuff?
Yep.
Is that a component of it? And in the schools as well?
I can anticipate that we'd put something together. I think our idea was to have kind of a calendar of the local events leading up to this, but this was kind of the town's effort in putting something kind of bigger together to culminate it all.
No, I think it's awesome.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think it's our understanding that some of the different cultural organizations are going to do things town-wide. We kind of see ourselves with Rose kind of being the, what would be the words, that we're the scheduler, like, so.
Because I remember we were designated Cultural District, so the Cultural District Subcommittee is looking to work with all of arts and cultural organizations and really become that information hub.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
You know, what are we doing? Who's doing it? You know, nobody wants to miss any events, so that's what we really want to start to do, to be able to help our local organizations. There are many who right now are in the planning stages, and they're doing a lot of really great ideas. And so as they finalize their planning, our hope is that, you know, we explore Farmington and our newsletters, but we really come and give information and help for them, and then we start to really promote it as each of them involves. It is a year-round celebration.
Oh, a year-round.
So it's a culmination. So all the different arts and cultural organizations are in the stages right now. So it's supposed to be what a lot of the other towns are doing around this day. They let their arts and cultural organizations really take the lead. The Humanities Council is the lead state agency that is leading the group. So every town has been asked to have two representatives that attend meetings every month, I assume. So they're also required and sharing. So this town is doing this, so we really want it to be a state-wide. They want it to be a state-wide, you know, filled with activities for the whole year. And then what we're proposing is that at the very end of the year, which is this final weekend, that would be the day that we have the big celebration and the whole community comes together.
Awesome.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I had a question. So on the cost estimate, am I right to assume that that $33,000 to $50,000 budget would be relatively, the only thing that looked like might be cheaper would be the logistical services maybe would be cheaper if it was only, so say we wanted just, it was Farmington only, and we don't want to, you know. If we did that, it sounds like we would still be in for about 25,000 to 30,000 for fireworks. We'd still be in for seven to 10 for a band, and logistical services might go down, but we'd still have, the budget would be almost the same, right?
You'd be in for the whole 50 instead of 25.
Yeah, well, that part, no, we're not splitting the 50. I get that. We wouldn't be splitting the 50, but I mean, say like, $50,000 is the budget for an event with Farmington only, or with Farmington and Avon, it sounds like. Does that make sense? I know that our share of the budget is half of $50,000 if we do your proposal. If we want to cut Avon out, we want to say we're going to do a Farmington-only proposal, that saves the town no money, right? That costs us money.
It costs us money. It would cost us more probably to figure out a site and to increase on our police and fire and all of kind of the elements of doing it in town.
All right. And then my only other question was on the site proposed. So I wasn't familiar with the split with Relay for Life, but I'd heard that that was a very successful event. Were you familiar enough with it to like speak about that at all?
Yeah.
Okay. I would hear just about why it was so good and why it made sense to collaborate there.
Yeah. So logistically, the 99 Thompson Road site is massive. And like I kind of said in the presentation, there's additional fields located nearby where you can have additional parking. So you're able to do handicap parking onsite, you're able to have the fireworks onsite. For the Relay for Life event, though, it gave them plenty of space to spread out. The other thing that happened with Relay for Life and part of why it wasn't feasible in Farmington was if it rained at all, it would destroy any field that we would put it on. And our main sites are at our schools and our athletic complexes. So unfortunately, we're a huge sports community, which is fantastic, but we need our fields in pristine contention almost the next day. You get any rain, that totally destroys it. What's unique about this 99 Thompson Road site is there's nobody farming it. There's nobody playing sports on it. It is an empty, open, flat, level space that gives you the space to spread out and logistically set up this event really, really smoothly. And from the Relay for Life's perspective, and I don't want to speak for them, but from what they told me, that it went very well because they had all of this space, they were able to set up the resources the way they needed to, traffic flow was good. There's only about six to eight neighborhood houses in that neighborhood. They don't do a lot of events on that site. They notify the neighbors when things like this happen. So there's very little community pushback when they do events like that, unlike some of our other neighborhoods in Farmington that I've heard had other concerns regarding noise and things like that.
And then, this is another one where I might not say it the right way, but I hope I get there. To speak to what Brian was saying, so we're going to have events Farmington-centric with our historical societies throughout the course of 2026. This event is the America Celebration event. It's not going to be the Avon Historical Event that Farmington is crashing or vice. It's going to be, it's a, we're all getting together to do the 250th celebration. I just want to make sure, you know, like, put out there that it's just, we're just coming together to do something great together, not...
It's collaborative, and that's part of why we want the municipalities to take a lead on an event like this. Having the local organizations participate, but having equal shares of everything ensures that it's equitable and really regionalizes the event and makes it notable.
And we will have lots of opportunities to showcase Farmington throughout the course of the year.
Absolutely. Through the bands, through the historical groups participating, tables, all of those venues will showcase both communities.
Right. And also, we anticipate if the local groups want to at that event, they can have tables, they can have things like that.
They can do historical reenactments. The space at 99 Thompson allows us room to do so many different elements, which is part of why we're so passionate about bringing it forward.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, you know, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
I touched all the bases. The first question is, we've obviously contacted Avon, and Avon is a partner in this.
Avon is amenable to a partnership. Just like me presenting to you tonight, they want to take the opportunity to present, but they have essentially agreed that this is a fantastic opportunity. And because we had such a great partnership with the Relay for Life event where we helped out, it's really created a nice bond between the two communities.
Great. And I guess the other item is, do you envision a committee set up, like representatives from Avon, representatives from Farmington, as this planning gets kind of ramped up?
I think we're open to the idea of setting up a committee. We definitely want municipal staff to take a lead on this, just to keep the logistics very, very clean. But again, we're obviously open to residential input and everybody's input to make this the best that it can possibly be.
Yeah, I think that's where I kind of land. I think, you know, there might be a lot of people that, you know, kind of want to put some input into this. And so somehow, however we, however we, you know, structure ourselves here, to harness that, I think would just be a huge part.
Absolutely.
I think a committee would be a value, I mean, community input, of course, but like actually a committee. I think that once, if the council puts a stamp of kind of approval on this, and then we establish a committee. So, you know what I'm saying? So that the committee, that we don't go backwards, forwards, and change up and do different things. I think that would be, I think that would be difficult. So I think that once, like, there's a stamp of approval, this is the type of event we want to have, this is the parameters of it, and then we get some committee base to help with the staff have input, that type of thing.
Great. That was, that was really my question.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I think this sounds like a great event for the two towns and ambitious. I'm curious if they'll be thought, given into coordinating with other towns in the valley, for example, and trying to avoid having everyone's events on the same day. For example, the Talke Mountain Music Fest is traditionally that Friday. So I'm just thinking about, you know, how to not, how to create an environment for...
Yeah, I mean, the date isn't set in stone. We can absolutely reevaluate and look at the other communities to ensure that we're not, you know, doing too much on one weekend. I think we chose this weekend just because we know the Fireman's Carnival is after the Fourth of July. Same thing, I believe Avon has a carnival as well, two weeks after. So, you know, then that's part of, with everybody celebrating the 250th, we are going to run into some dates that overlap, but we will be conscientious about what dates we select within the valley community.
Yeah. In my head, I couldn't come up with a better date, so.
I was doing the same math.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of our tricky point, but...
I think it's important, though, at least just communication with other towns, too, as they're planning their events in terms of figuring out how that happens. And I guess my other question is just in terms of planning, I have no idea how to plan an event like this, so I leave it to everyone else. So trust, you know, my questions are coming from a place of total ignorance.
Sure.
But in terms, I mean, the budget, especially on the security logistics side, is, I mean, that's planned in advance, but it's obviously based on crowd estimates and how many people are going to come. Have there been events like this before with, where we can, that we can use to base on the number, for the number of people? Because I don't know how many people would come to, say, Unionville Fest back when it was held. But I'm just couldn't, and of course, I've watched too many documentaries on HBO recently, like Music Festivals Gone Wrong. So, but I'm just, you know, I want to make sure that it's organized and the right amount of security, the right amount of port-a-potties, the right, you know.
I think one of the things is that Jessie comes from a place where they ran big festivals, big things, and so she has the experience of that. I would say, in Farmington, we have not run something like this that to have, you know, what the budget is, but I think absolutely between Jessie's knowledge and our Chief of Police and how we would run the event, like, I mean, we have the knowledge of how to do it. It's just that, and it will be based on size. And I think Jessie has, you said you've run events from really quite large.
So yeah, so North Branford, the community I come from, we run what we call a Potato and Corn Festival, which fell...
I've been to it.
Solely in my department. And that is a three-day massive festival. Our budget for that festival is about $152,000. And it runs Friday, Saturday, and Sunday all day, carnival, food trucks. I think we had a circus this year, which I wasn't part of because I was here in Farmington, but I was still heavily involved in knowing the logistics of it. So this compared to some of the other events I've run is actually on a smaller scale than what I'm used to doing. So I feel very comfortable with what we've put together and what I presented to you is something that I feasibly feel that our department and Avon's department in a collaboration could handle. Yeah.
So, and you think the attendee estimates are...
I do. So in North Branford, which is a community of 14,000 people, we would attract with correct marketing up to 20,000 just on Saturday night and over 40,000 over the three days. So I think five to seven is probably, without having those other carnival elements and things like that, is probably a safe number for what we're looking at attending. And again, weather plays into those factors. There is a lot of things that play into that estimated number, but based on what we're looking at presenting, I think that's a reasonable expectation.
And Jessie, you can, I would think that as we get closer to the event, as you're planning it, if we feel like it's getting bigger and bigger, we...
Absolutely. Yeah. So there will be multiple coordination meetings between police, fire, EMS, and myself to go through, hey, this is what we're thinking, what are you recommending? Hey, that corner is a blind corner. I think we should have an officer out there or additional signage. And that's why that range for the 8,000 to 10,000 logistical budget could include, you know, how many signs can we get from neighboring communities for the directional light signs? All of those little logistical elements, do we need a light tower on that corner because it's dark, there's no streetlights? All those little things, we'll have multiple meetings leading up to the event to ensure that everything is kind of thought through carefully.
Then, my last question then is budget. Obviously, this is this year's budget because it's through 2026.
Yeah, we've been putting something in the upcoming budget.
Okay.
One of the things, too, and then Brian, is that when we were thinking about activities and things like that, because we haven't done something like this, we really are looking for a, what I call like a simple event. This is, you know, it's, I think it gets a good bang for the buck. It has the fireworks, it has the food trucks, and we have booths, but it's really a relatively simple type of event. And I think that's where, I think that's important. It's simpler because of our staff capacity and everything that goes along with that. So when we were trying to come up with an event, we didn't want to overcomplicate this for the first time, and this is something... And this is something that I think between the partnership between the two towns, the resources, the staffing, it all works out. You know, that was our plan.
Yeah, I, I agree. Simple is, people tend to like simple too. Because you, you can't mess it up as easily. Some people then go and they say, oh, what a lovely event. If it's being held before the end of the fiscal year, how is it going into the next?
Usually, our budget passes like in May.
Okay.
And April, so it would be in the July.
Right. So we'd be paying for it after, I'm just trying to figure out. So we, because we have to pay for this stuff during the current budget year.
We'll have to work that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. I have nothing else. Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate it.
Then just to see other things, again, one of the reasons why we kind of like this idea is that, two things. One is that the carnival with the fireworks, people love that in Farmington. And the second thing is, is people really love the Concerts on the Green that we have here. So that's kind of like the two ideas where it's music and the fireworks. And we kind of envision people bringing their lawn chairs, their family, sitting, listening to the music, patriotic music, and getting up and getting food trucks, going to some historic booths, some cultural things and some, you know, a couple of talks of people talking at the beginning. But really just a community kind of big concert on the green to celebrate. That's what I was kind of envisioning.
Brian, just a quick question. I love this event and I'm curious, are we looking at it as an event that's like our concerts, which are free? Or to find out what kind of numbers we might be getting? Is there some kind of pre-registration thing so we have an idea before we walk in? There's nothing like that.
I don't think so. The, the appeal of events like this is bringing the community together. So pre-registration kind of creates that like limitation of, oh, I didn't register. Oh, I forgot. Oh, you know, my mother-in-law's in town and she really wants to join us. So I think the idea would, that would be a free event and open to the public and, and we kind of plan for what we can get.
When we build it, they come.
That's, that's exactly it, so...
And Jesse has some experience too with some sponsorships and some different things. So that's gonna, we think we're gonna put that into the mix.
Yeah, I have a sponsorship packet that I've used from other facilities, so we can have a fireworks sponsor. We can have a shuttle sponsor if we decide to go the shuttle route. And again, there are other logistical considerations, like we could run a shuttle from this site. There could be other transportation options to make it more convenient and conducive for families and offset costs. But we didn't wanna overwhelm you with the first presentation, so I kind of didn't go too deep into the weeds, but...
So overall, do we like it?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, it's good.
It's gonna be great of it.
I think you, thank you, Jesse. I think it was a great presentation.
I had a lot of support from the team here. Rose and Kathy spent a lot of time with me to ensure that it was, it was spot-on. So thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
I think once we start building more and more, I think it'll give me more excitement. And once we, you know, get everything going next year, your committee, so I think it'd be a perfect opportunity. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate it.
E, we have no new business. So we'll go into F, please.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining. To adjourn the meeting to executive session as permitted by Connecticut General Statutes, Section 1-225A, for the following purposes, as allowed by Section 1-206. That is below. In attendance, and the executive session shall be limited to members of the town council, town manager, and the assistant town manager.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. We will open the door back up after the executive session is over to do a complete adjournment.